This is the Mendon Select Board meeting for Wednesday, August 7, 2024. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded. All right, so if you could please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have a lot of things on the agenda tonight, and just so everyone knows, we will probably be taking a few things out of order. There are a few public hearings on the agenda that have specific times where we need to start those items. So, but we will, yeah, we will, just so you know, there probably will be a little bit of shuffling. But I would like to start with item two, which is citizen statements and petitions. So if there's anyone here in the room or online who would like to say something. All right. I do not see anyone at this time, so I think we will possibly be moving on to three. We do have some people invited here, so. Perfect. So, so this is one of the items where we're going to take it out of order. We're going to do some of our housekeeping a little bit later in the agenda. We are going to jump, if that's all right. I see we have one of our guests has arrived, to, and some acknowledgements. So we would like to start with acknowledging the Commonwealth Heroine Award, which has been awarded to Ellen Agro. And so I would like to invite our, our state rep, State Representative Brian Murray to join us up at the front, and Ellen Agro, if you would also kindly join us. Thank you. So we are, we are thrilled to have both of you here today. And if you could speak into the microphone, I see it looks like there's just one microphone at that table today. But if you.
It's you, not me.
Put you on the spot the moment you, moment you walk in. But if you don't mind, could you tell us a little bit about this award, Representative Murray?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It's wonderful to be here. And actually, you have a little bit of familiarity with this award yourself, having been a past awardee. So this is an award that's established by the Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women, which is a separate state agency. I think they just celebrated their 25th anniversary. And the mission of this group is to provide opportunities and promote equal opportunities and advantages for, for women. And as part and parcel of that, they have a yearly program, ceremony actually, where it's called the Commonwealth Heroine Award. And the idea is to recognize those women in the community who have gone above and beyond the call of duty to really provide services to the community, oftentimes without any fanfare or recognition, but really kind of, I think, the, the nuts and bolts activities that really make a town a community and a place where people want to live. So as legislators, we have the opportunity to nominate one woman every year from our district that would fit that, that role. And this year, I gladly selected Ellen as the Commonwealth Heroine for 2024. And actually learned a lot more of her background than I knew. My involvement with her primarily has been as town clerk, and she does a wonderful job for the town of Mendon in that very difficult role. But I didn't realize that, you know, she'd been involved in the past with the Taft Public Library, on the trustees, as a friend, all of the different communities and other organizations, theater and music arts, very, very wide-ranging and, and, and very interesting. So she was a very appropriate candidate, and we had a ceremony at the State House in June, I believe, where Ellen came in along with other women that were recognized throughout the Commonwealth. And I, I think it was a very nice ceremony, and, and I think you, you enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was a very nice day.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Ellen, do you have anything that you want to say? It's not required. Thank you so much for being here, but I just, if, if you would like to say something, you are welcome to.
Well, my mic doesn't work, so.
Oh, you can use mine. No excuse.
Thank you, Brian. And I'm very humbled by this. As you said, it's not really about my town clerk job, it's about the other things I've done for the community since I've lived in Mendon. So I was humbled by it, and I really appreciate it, and that's all I really want to say.
Thank you. And would anyone on the board like to add any words?
All I'm gonna say is, since you were elected to this position, and actually your involvement before that with the Taft Library, and everything else you've touched, Ellen, this is all well-deserved. And I just, I know the whole board does, but the town really appreciates you, and you really are part of the glue that makes this town what it is, and we really appreciate it. And I appreciate Brian for, you know, thinking about it and picking somebody from, from his entire district. You know, you're the one this year, and it was well-deserved.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I also will add that I, I did help also research some of your background, and I also have been impressed by the number of activities that you've been involved with, and how many different organizations you've helped with, and how many people's lives you've touched as a result. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It says a lot when you actually have to edit it down to several pages.
Yes. There, there was, there was a lot, very impressive. So, thank you. So thank you both for joining us. I don't know, we have, I would love it if we could have a quick photo, since we've brought you both in here today.
Sure.
And then we'll move on to our, one of our public hearings.
And before you move on, I just want to thank both you and Mike for giving me the information, because while I knew some of what Ellen had done, I didn't know the breadth of it. And generally, when I do this, I don't want to contact the individual to allow it to be a surprise. So the research that both of you did and got to me was very, very important and very, very appreciated, so thank you very much.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for giving us the opportunity. So I enjoyed that process also.
And Ellen, if you wonder why I was giving you the cold shoulder for so long, I just didn't want to, I don't have a problem keeping a secret, it's just all the people I tell that.
Understood.
Actually, did we want to, so I know we do need to move quite soon to our first public hearing, but we, now that we've brought you here, we could also add a formal commendation from the board, thanking Ellen.
I think it would be nice to put something in the record.
Okay. So I would be willing to entertain a motion.
Hi. I move to grant Ellen Argos Select Board commendation in honor of her designation as a Commonwealth Heroine.
Second.
There you go.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The motion passes. Thank you. We officially commend you also. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
And if we could do just a very quick photo, if we think there's time?
So if you could.
Doing all right?
Yeah. Guess we'll go over there.
Okay. Picture on the spot. little more jumping around, because we have a public hearing that is scheduled for 6:40. So item seven on the agenda is to consider a new off-premises retail package wine and malt beverage license being issued to 147 Hartford Avenue Mendon LLC. And so the, I will just read the public hearing notice. The Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on August 7 at 6:40 PM in the Town Hall Upper Meeting Room, 20 Main Street Mendon, to consider an off-premises retail package wines and malt beverages liquor license to 147 Hartford Avenue Mendon LLC, DBA SAVON, a convenience store located at 147 Hartford Avenue East, Mendon, Massachusetts, 01756. This is a new application, and as an abutter, you are being notified. Oh, this is reading what was sent to abutters. If you have any concerns regarding this license issues, regarding this license issues, all interested parties will be given an opportunity to be heard. So I'd be looking for a motion to open.
I move to open the 6:40 PM public hearing for the off-premises retail package wine and malt beverage license at 147 Hartford Ave. East. Motion made. Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And so now, we welcome public comment. Jeremy, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, this is a new license at, at 147 Hartford East, as we've, as we've discussed. I believe we have the attorney here representing. Anything you'd like to say?
Sir. Attorney Sam Ipanian from Marlborough, representing the applicant. I just want to, I mean, first say it was a pleasure coming to Mendon. It's always a pleasure. It's a pleasure, really, to introduce my client, who's an exemplary business person. But before I do that, I want to thank everyone here in your town that helped us along, because I know it was hard because of some change in personnel. When we first started the petition, or the application, the admin, I guess, suddenly left, and then I was working with your manager, who was in the process of leaving, and in fact, the guy came by and filed your new management. Everyone has been as courteous, pleasant, as helpful as possible, and I think you guys should be, you know, proud of it. It's really great to, actually, every time I've worked in this community, it's been great, so. But I have a, just, I just want to say that I think my client is, is a well-known businessman in the Falmouth, Massachusetts area. He has a long track record of solid business practice. He runs several gas stations, a couple of convenience stores, no, no beer and wine stuff. This is his first one of those. He also manages a pretty robust fuel, fuel hauling company, well-known in the town of Falmouth, well-respected in many, many circles. And the building, of course, I drove by on the way in, it's really looking good. I think it's gonna be a real asset to your community. I think the application is in order. I did hand the green cards in, and we would just be, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but would be thrilled for you to approve this and send it along to the ABCC, who we'll, you know, work for, further with.
I will, I will say, I had a Select Board member reach out to me with the, with the letter of the MGL about what was required for our notification, and we went through that piece by piece and made sure that we ticked off every, every bit of our, our notification and our procedural process. So from my perspective, I'm comfortable with the town's processing and, and application of this application.
Thank you. And I would like to open it up to comment from anyone in the audience, either here in person or online, so please raise your hand or your virtual hand if you have comments or questions. Okay. All right. Seeing none, then I think that we, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Seconds.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So the motion passes, the public hearing is closed. And so then next up, we, we, I would entertain a motion to approve the license.
I move to approve the off-premises retail package wine and malt beverage license at 147 Hartford Ave. East, pending brooding slip completion by police and fire departments. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. The motion passes.
Thank you very much. I know my client's thrilled. Thank you. I was, didn't get a chance to say hi to the clerk, because she was also very helpful today.
Okay, wonderful.
She's obviously well-deserved. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
How do we pronounce the name of the store, by the way?
Ah, yes.
Savon.
Savon, okay, yes.
Excellent.
Thrown by the lack of E. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. So next up, we have another public hearing scheduled for 6:45. So item eight on the agenda is a hearing to consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc. to locate poles, wires, and fixtures. So I'm going to read the public hearing notice again, and do step in if I miss something. Okay. In conformity with the requirements of MGL Chapter 166, Section 22, the Mendon Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a poll hearing on August 7, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Upper Town Hall Meeting Room, 20 Main Street Mendon, Massachusetts, 01756, and remotely to consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc. to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way: Hartford Avenue East, beginning at a point approximately 25 feet in a southeast direction; install underground facilities on Talbot Farm Drive; National Grid to relocate six JO poles on Hartford Avenue East, installing one pole box on Talbot Farm Drive; and relocation 74 feet of 2- to 3-inch ducts from all riser pole to new riser pole location number 30836342.
I move to open the 6:45 public hearing for pole location number 30836342.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now we open it up for a public comment or discussion. Jeremy?
Yeah, so post it online and post it in your, in your packets, is, is a map of the pole location. It is, nothing controversial from, from my perspective and from the board and public perspective. I don't think so either, so, you know, Chair will, will open it up to comment from there.
Okay, great. So is there any, anyone here to comment on this item, either in the room? Ah, yes. Would you like to, to come up, to make your comment? If you, if you don't mind, if you could speak into the microphone, please?
That way people online can hear you.
Yes. And if you, if you could, please say your, your name and address.
Sure. My name is Patricia Woods, and I live at 99 Hartford Avenue East. I was just wondering, when, have you been notified when they are going to stop the project to move the poles?
One second. I'll look up the sequence in the app.
I know it can until.
I'm sorry?
We can't, it couldn't go forward until we approve this, so, and I guess this typically hasn't been scheduled yet, but I think it coincides with other things going on with the warehouse in Hopedale, Main Street.
Okay, because we have four trees that have to be cut down, and when we got this notification to come to the meeting, we thought maybe it was going to stop right away, but nobody has come and looked at the trees, or marked the trees, or done anything on our side. So I was just wondering when this is all going to start, because I had spoken to GFI Construction in Boston, Bill Buckley, when originally it started, because I got the plans from Jack Hunter in Hopedale. And I called him, and he said it was going to start the third or fourth week of May.
I see.
Well, here we are in August. Nothing.
Well, if it's in connection with the House project, there's a lot of moving parts to that, and it's not, it's not anywhere near ready to start. So if you're worried about, you know, somebody showing up tomorrow morning and start cutting down your trees, that's not gonna happen. And I would suggest that you give the tree warden, Ted Steves, a call. I do know that National Grid has a lot of latitude as to what they do with trees, but they've, they've been working very closely with the new tree warden. And his, his contact information is on the website, you know, mendonma.gov. You send him a message, he's your best contact.
And what was his name again, please?
Ted Steves. But again, if you look at, you know, mendonma.gov.
Okay.
If you look at mendonma.gov.
I've done on the website.
You'll find he's the tree warden, and he's, he's very responsive, and he'll work with you on that.
I think that might be listed under departments.
Did you get a postcard from National Grid about the trees, or did you only talk with the contractor?
No, there was a gentleman that came when they marked our property to put the pole down, and he said, he told us it would be lucky if they stopped within two years, because the trees have to come down, everything has to be done, and we're worried, because I have hot condition, my husband, Tom, has asthma, and we can't be without power. If we, without power for two or three days, we can't do that, because they'd have to provide a generator or something for us to get power, because.
We have a, we have a well, and we use that for drinking water and, you know, other facilities and stuff like that. We have to have some way to get power.
Not only that.
Normally, all of the way they would do that is they have all the infrastructure in place, and when everything else is done, they throw a switch, and they switch it from one to the other. So I don't think that's a concern, but either way, I think if you're worried about the trees and the power, the first step is, is the tree warden.
Can I ask you a question? Why are they making it on the Mendon side to widening, which the next lane almost on my front doorstep, when I got all that, all that empty land across the street on Plain Street?
Well, I would, I guess I would, I would explain that that's part of what's still under discussion.
What I'm trying to say is, you know, it would be a lot cheaper for everybody involved, instead of moving all the poles, all the lines, all the, just go over, back to that one boughy wall up 20 to 30 feet, and it's, it's an empty field, empty woods.
Yeah, I will, I will tell you, at this moment, unless something has changed, the Hopedale Planning Board changed their plans to basically do exactly what you said.
Yes. Widen it on the other side?
Yes.
That would be a lot less.
Yes. I don't know if that's actually where it's ultimately gonna end up, but that's where it is right now, and it's, it's been an ongoing discussion between the two towns, because the big concern is the additional traffic that's gonna happen at the Four Corners. Our planning board worked with the other, the other developer that's putting in the other warehouse up on, up on Cape Road, and they've actually bought that piece of land, you know, the vacant lot on the corner. So that's gonna be used to widen that intersection. And the one at Plain Street is under discussion right now with our highway surveyor, who's done a great job with that, and, and Jack Hunter, the planner. So it's, it's very much in flux. I mean, this is still moving forward. They have, they need permission to, to do something, which is what we're doing, but, but it's by no means settled yet, and it's, it's, there's no plan that we're aware that's gonna happen.
Because I, I would, to my own thought, you know, it would be a lot less expensive to do it on the other side of the street with the widening.
Yeah, well, I know, like I said, it's all, there's a lot of moving parts to it, it's all under discussion, nothing's been finalized.
Well, understandable. What I'm trying to make point is, you don't have all underground pipes to move, which you gotta dig down to add another link, all the surge lines, the water lines, or whatever's under there.
That's, that's a point, right? Really, the, the, there is a water line that comes up, you know, that, you know, that comes up Plain Street.
Right.
So they're gonna, they may, they may deal with that no matter what, but that's all under, it's all under, under design plans right now, so nothing's been finalized.
I can see if they're moving the pole in four or five feet, but you move where the pole is right now, to the front of the pole, to where they're moving it, we have lost 13 feet from our front edge.
17.
17 feet.
17 feet. I walk off my front walkway, and I walk from here to the edge of your car, and I'm at the pole. I mean, you get a line of traffic, dude, they're looking right in my living room window. Where on the other side, there's no houses.
And if they're worried about accidents and everything, because every week, or every two weeks, there's an accident on Plain Street and Hartford Avenue East, put up a red stop sign, or put up a flashing sign, or do something, but I don't think this is the problem. This is the solution to the problem. You're gonna widen the road, you're gonna have more traffic, you're not gonna get out of our driveway, you're gonna have four lanes.
There's, there's discussion of a traffic light being put in there.
Okay.
So, but that's all, it's in Hopedale, so it's a discussion between the two towns and our planners and our planning boards, so. Although the Mendon Planning Board has had no input to that whatsoever, because it's all, the intersection is in Hopedale, right? But it is, it's under discussion.
No, sir, all due respect, okay, to our Mendon Police Force.
Yes.
They sit in front of my house practically every other night to do radar, okay? My house is here, Plain Street's right here, with a stop sign. The officer sits here, they run right through the stop sign three or four at a time, and he doesn't even go after them and stop them. When I come, I confronted him personally, and I asked him why. Oh, that's a Mendon Stop, I hope they'll stop sign. You mean, if I go across the street, I can run into all the stop signs in the world, because they're in the next town and joining? They have the accident, it comes in, they fly across the intersection, the cars are wrecked, they're on Mendon side, we wind up paying the police officer to do the duty work.
Well, there's, there's a long history of local jurisdiction within those two towns, and I experienced it when I was a cop here, and the officer's correct.
When I called the chief of police in Mendon.
Right.
And I was quoting from him personally, because he gave me a call back, okay? And he told me, he says, I don't know why the officer isn't stopping the cars, he said it's a duty, we have jurisdiction, they should be stopping.
Obviously, he knows more about it than I do, then. That's great.
I talked to the chief of police.
All right, well, thank, thank you so much for these comments.
It's very frustrating, you know. I appreciate your time and to listen to us.
Well, and I think this is, this is useful information to us, and we do have the option to continue this hearing if the, the board would like to get more information from National Grid about this. So, Jeremy, can you walk us through the process of doing that?
Yeah, of course. So the, the next motion that was on, here, is to close the public hearing. You don't have to close the public hearing, we can continue the public hearing, pending additional information from National Grid. We can follow up on, on some of the specific concerns that you all have, and bring this up again at our, our next Select Board meeting. I will say, this plan was originally filed with the town at the end of May in 2024, which was an interim town administrator ago, before we had, before we had an executive assistant on board as well, so I'm not sure of the, you know, as we talked about, there might be an additional or, or changes to the specifics. So it's incumbent upon us to follow up with National Grid and get a little bit more comment. So it would be my recommendation to the board to continue this public hearing, to not close it now, and to, to find a little bit more clarity for you all.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Do we have a timing date of the next scheduled meeting at this time?
So we, we don't have a time, we'd have to notify, we'd have to notify abutters.
Any idea if they're gonna go through it, or Hopedale's gonna change the plans or anything? Any idea when we'll be notified of what's going on, if they're gonna be changing?
There's no, there's no definitive timeframe, it's just end of discussion right now. All I can tell you is it's not settled yet. I don't know when it will be.
So we can continue this public hearing until the next meeting, so.
Which is in two weeks.
So moved. So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All right, all in favor of continuing the meeting, or continuing the hearing on August 21st, 2024?
Aye.
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 Right. All right. So then we will pass over the potential motion and we will move to our next hearing, public hearing, which is item nine, I believe. Public hearing for, scheduled for 6:50 PM. A hearing to consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires and fixtures. I'm going to read, again, read the public hearing notice. In conformity with the requirements of MGL Chapter 166, Section 22, the Mendon Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a poll hearing on August 7th, 2024 at 6:50 PM in the Upper Town Hall Meeting Room, 20 Main Street, Mendon, Massachusetts, 01756 and remotely, to consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Blackstone Street, beginning at a point approximately 100 feet in a northeast of the center line of the intersection of Carpenter Hill Road, installing a new pole 48-5 to service new customer at 101A Blackstone Street, number 30830299.
I move to open the 6:50 public hearing for pole location number 30830299.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Jeremy?
Let me pull down my computer, close down one second. So this is for a new, new service at Blackstone Street. So without this new pole location, this entity does not get electricity service. So I entertain...
Do you know if they're serving electric, if they're going to do both houses? There's two houses being built right there.
So usually with a pole location like this, they can serve multiple from them. I don't know specifically. We can, we can, the vote can be conditional on service to both.
They need service.
So if, if they both don't have service, I imagine we'll have another...
That's what I was wondering, if there was going to be another pole request coming in later.
So is there, is this about the 6, 6:50 hearing for the pole on Blackstone Street? Okay, oh, please come up. And if you could, please speak into the microphone and say your name and address.
Jeff Silva, National Grid.
Ah, okay.
I'm here to answer all...
Oh, you're from National Grid, excellent.
All questions, yes.
Oh, okay.
I was told to be here at 7:15, so I don't know if that changed from the other ones that were added on.
Yeah, so the, the public hearing notices were for 6:45, 6:50 and 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Thanks for coming early.
I was given the wrong information. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Blackstone Street, I believe, will be served by both because it is on the center of the lot line. So they will, I think...
You're going to put it between those two homes, like where that driveway is?
Correct. So it would serve each home because it's on the center of the lot line. So both those customers are able to attach that pole because it divides the line in half.
Great. Glad you showed up.
Is there other public comment or questions? There are fewer people in the room now and anyone online? Hearing none. Any, any other comments? I guess I would entertain a motion to close.
I move to close the 6:50 public hearing for pole location number 30830299.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And I would then entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the pole location number 308, 2, 30299.
Second.
Sorry, that was awkward.
Okay. Any further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have another public hearing, our seven, you can, you can stay. This one is also a poll hearing. So item 10 on the agenda, and this, yeah, we're almost catching up. Public hearing scheduled for 7:00 PM. A hearing to consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires and fixtures. Again, I will read the public hearing notice. In conformity with the requirements of MGL Chapter 166, Section 22, the Mendon Select Board hereby gives notice that it will hold a poll hearing on August 7th, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Upper Town Hall Meeting Room, 20 Main Street, Mendon, Massachusetts, 01756 and remotely...
Yeah, sorry, don't get me off the details.
Yes, sorry.
To consider.
Thank you. To consider the request of Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc. to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Millville Road installs six JO poles on Millville Road, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Wood Drive and continuing approximately 900 feet in a south direction, installing six new poles and overhead wire to serve new house at number 220 Millville Road. And this is number 30956318.
I move to open the 7:00 PM public hearing for pole location 30956318.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Jeremy?
Yeah, so I turn it over to public comment and discussion and will invite Jeff Silva from National Grid to describe the pole location.
Seems like a pretty straightforward request. They're putting it on the same side as the property, coming straight down the road to provide service to 220. I don't believe there's any roads or wires existing there. So it's a lot of work for a single home, but it is what it is.
What does the, the initial one says install six JO poles?
Joint owned, so it'd be a Verizon and National Grid pole. So a solely owned pole is just National Grid or Verizon. A JO pole is joint owned.
Is, is, does Verizon and National Grid still divvy up the towns as to who's responsible to set the pole?
We set every pole. Verizon removes every pole.
That's a...
That's how it works. That contract was done five years ago and...
Working out?
Probably settles the question.
It's worked out, it's worked out for us because we don't have to wait for them to install poles. And it works out for them because they're the last ones to transfer anyways. So as they transfer, they take the poles out when they're done.
What about all the poles around town where you can see there's a new pole set, it's been cut at the top, the bottom of the old one that's hanging there? Some of them are kind of low. What is the, what is the process of switching all the wires over, getting rid of the broken pieces and the old pieces?
So what happens is we take our wires, we transfer them over. Next would be either cable or the town fire. We are always first.
And how does that get scheduled? How long?
There's, there's a program called Engines that all of the utilities are on. So once we say we are done with our work, it gets progressed to the next company, which is typically cable or the town if they have a fire alarm system.
So how does National Grid, are you guys behind right now because of all the storms and things we've dealt with?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, there's a, there's a bunch of them around us. Some on Bates Street, there's some on Bellingham Street, there's some on Hartford Ave. East.
Has the, has our wires been transferred over yet?
Yes. Oh, there you go. Some of them, I guess.
Yours has.
So our...
Power's been transferred.
Right. So power's transferred and then it's...
Where is that? Yours is on your street or Washington Street?
No, I'm talking about the one on Hartford Ave.
What I would tell you is it's the summer and people go on vacation.
So a question that came up from the first hearing is how, how long is the power typically out if there are new poles installed?
Couple hours, maybe.
Couple of hours, okay. They were concerned that it might be a longer time.
So what happens is they run all of the lines and then they'll do a switch typically at night when everybody's sleeping. But they'll send out notifications. If it's going to be during the day, they'll send out notifications and say, there's going to be a shutdown. Here's the timeframe we need the power off for. And if there's a rain date, they'll give a rain date for...
Okay, so, so the, the affected people are notified of the outage in advance?
Always.
Okay. That's helpful information. Thank you.
I'm here to help.
Thank you.
So I, I will let you know that our first public hearing at 6:45 for number 30836342 was continued until our August 21st meeting.
Hartford Ave and Plain Street.
Yes, so that, that was continued. So we're not discussing that now. I'm just giving you a heads up that that will be on our agenda for the August 21st meeting.
Okay.
To answer a few more questions, so we'll communicate that to you.
I shall be back.
Any further discussion on, from the public, online, in the room? Okay. So I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the 7:00 PM public hearing for pole location number 30956318.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right, thank you very much. And I then would look for a, a motion to approve the poll.
So moved.
Second.
So, so any further discussion? So, so all in favor of approving the pole location 30956318? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you.
You as well.
All right, yes, thank you. Okay, so then, now that we've got that, I believe that was our last scheduled hearing. So I think I would like to move back to the items that we passed, that we skipped over. What's that? Oh, we have, oh, we have somebody here for number 13. So we could skip to that one. Okay, I think that does make sense if there's somebody here in the room for that one. Okay, great. So we will continue to shuffle our items a bit to respect everybody's time who showed up here. So we're going to jump to item 13 on the agenda, which is to review and vote to approve JDM Sales Host Community Agreement. So I believe, yes, welcome, thank you for joining us. And if, if you don't mind, if you could say your name and who you represent into the microphone that people online can hear?
I'm attorney Chris Ryan from Ryan Law Office in Blackstone. And I'm here on behalf of my client, which is JDM Sales, Inc., which is a marijuana dispensary at 103 Uxbridge Road. I'm here tonight requesting that the board authorize the town administrator to sign a renewal, I should say, new host community agreement. What happened is that way back, I say way back, it's really not that long ago, but when all this marijuana stuff started, what happened is Chapter 94G said that communities could negotiate a host community agreement with the marijuana dispensary. And communities did all sorts of things and dispensaries did so forth. At that time, the Cannabis Control Commission had no authority to review a host community agreement nor pass judgment on it. The Cannabis Control Commission requested that the legislature give it the power and authority to review host community agreements, reject them, whatever. They did end up getting that power only recently. And what they've decided to do is when renewals take place for licenses, which is yearly, they're just denying the old host community agreements automatically and saying, get a new one. So, and I'm not kidding. So in fact, I've talked to this, put a few municipal lawyers and they're all like, God help us. So in any event, I had to do this in Blackstone for a client, a different client, and I'm here tonight with the same thing, whereby we're requesting that this board sign a new host community agreement. So I've talked extensively with your town council on this. The host community agreement that we have before you tonight has been approved by your town council. I've talked to your town administrator about it as well. So the terms and conditions have been already done regarding that. What we're actually using for the most part is what's called the Model Host Community Agreement, which is something that the Cannabis Control Commission actually has put out as their preferred host community agreement, now that they have the authority and the power to control that document, which wasn't the case before. So I'm going to ask this board if you would please authorize the town administrator to sign it on behalf of the board and then we can send it off to the Cannabis Control Commission.
So just so I'm clear, you as their attorney and our town council, Charis North, have discussed it and come to an agreement on the language?
Yes, we've both discussed it on the phone and via email, both ways.
And if I may. So I, I've discussed this with, with Chris, with attorney Ryan as well. So the Cannabis Control Commission is essentially rejecting any host community agreement that was signed before October 2023. And they have this boilerplate template sort of thing where you fill in the specifics. His client filled in the specifics, went back to Charis, who gave me notes, and I went back to attorney Ryan and we went back and forth a couple of times. And specifics in front of you have been agreed to by both his client and, and our attorney, Charis North.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised JDM Sales Host Community Agreement.
Second.
Further discussion? Questions? Okay, all right.
That, this means just a little bit of side discussion, this means that we'll be seeing that from our other dispensaries as well?
Yes, we've gotten a message from our other dispensaries as well. So yeah, this will likely come up in the next handful of months as their license comes up for renewal.
The renewals are at different times, so our renewals, actually, our renewal has passed, but we're on an extension because of what they did, because they only rejected it about three weeks before we was, our renewal was over. We've been waiting, they're just not very proactive.
Well, I'm sure they have a lot to deal with if the, if the legislature did this. They can't turn that stuff on and down.
Right, but they are very slow.
They're also waiting for leadership, I believe.
Yes, they have. If you read the Boston Globe, you know what I'm talking about.
That's a kind, that's a kind interpretation.
I am now going to get skewered by them, but...
Any...
You're used to it.
I am.
Any further discussion? All right, so the motion has been made and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take your time.
Nice seeing you.
So the whole board has to sign it, so do you want to, yeah, do you want a wet signature? I can mail it back to you or do you want to scan it?
I'll send some.
Okay, Chris. Yeah, we'll scan, we'll sign it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that has a, like, online that we should jump to or do we want to backtrack to?
I don't see anybody. I don't know the telephone number.
Right.
Jonathan Dudley might be here for Chapter 90.
Yes, I do see him on there.
And do we have Elise as well?
I do see Elise, I see an Elise. So what, I mean, what would you recommend that we take next, given the...
I believe, yeah, so 12, I think we take the appointment of Elise and then move on back.
Okay. Like, we'll have to go through item by item and make sure that we got all the items.
I will circle them as we...
Thank you. Okay. So we are going to move to item 12 on the agenda, which is, because we see somebody is here online for the meeting, so we're going to review and consider the appointment of Alisa Bowery to the position of administrative assistant for building and zoning. So Jeremy, could you tell us about this?
Yes, so Alisa, are you online with us here? See, you're muted. Alisa, can you hear us? I'll go on as, I think Jason might be messaging her. So we, we recently had a retirement in the building and zoning administrator position who this board recognized at our last meeting after nearly 25 years of service to the town. And we, we posted this position and we, we have Ms. Bowery who's applied and been interviewed by both building, zoning... by both Building, Zoning, and Human Resources, been recommended to the board. Her application materials are in your packets. She's had a career of 20-plus years at UMass in similar administrative roles and has been recommended by the interview panel. So I hope she can join us here, but she has also indicated that her availability starts on Monday. So there's been a roughly about a week interlude in between. We're hopeful with this appointment that she can start right away and we can minimize the disruption to the office or the gap in service to the office.
I move to appoint Alisa Bowery to the position of Administrative Assistant, Building and Zoning, at a fiscal 2025 rate of $24.10 an hour, rate pending the approval of local G72 MOA. I so move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would just say thank you for adding "our." But our, the motion was suggested this way because there's a later motion in here to approve an MOA for local G72, and she will be covered by that in a fiscal 2025 rate. So just want to make that clear. That's the conditional nature.
Pending part, pending is something that will happen potentially later this meeting.
Hopefully.
Yes, okay, all right. Any further discussion? Is Alisa able to say hello? All right, she may have stepped away. So if there's no further discussion, the motion's been made and seconded. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, wonderful. So welcome, Alisa. We are glad that you were able to start so soon. And I think that's wonderful that we will minimize that gap.
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right. Where to next, Jeremy?
So I believe, I don't know the phone number, so I apologize, but I see Jonathan Dudley is online to talk about Chapter 90 supposedly, presumably, which would be number 16, and then we can hop back into order.
Okay, so John, are you, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
You are, excellent. Okay, so let us get to item 16, Chapter 90, Millville Road Project Request. Jeremy, did you have any introduction or should we just jump right to John?
I think John can speak to it much better than I can.
John, please let us, please tell us about this.
So a sense of supporting paperwork, which I hope you guys all received. The plan is to redo Millville Road with a hut in place. Two inch, they grind the road down two inches. Hardens back up and then we'll top it with an inch and a half of asphalt. And that would be from Route 16 to number 130, which is the worst part of Millville Road.
And this is specifically for using Chapter 90 funds for this project?
Yes, so Chapter 90, in case people are not familiar, the process gets approved by the board and then I submit it to the state. But I guess, sorry, gets approved, submitted to the board for approval. Then it goes to the accountant for approval and then it will get submitted to the state for their approval.
Great, okay, thank you. So do I understand correctly, there is work going on Millville Road now? Is that, has this?
Yeah, this is preparation.
Preparation for this work?
Yes, it's preparation for this work and stuff that needs to be done before we can pave it.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I would move to approve the Chapter 90 request for approximately 9,500 feet of resurfacing Millville Street in the amount of $409,173. Second.
Further discussion? I think, is it, it is Millville Street and not Millville Road now? Is that correct? Because I know.
Oh, it's too different.
It is technically Millville Street.
Yes.
But I will tell you that a lot of delivery companies will not accept Millville Street that comes up as Millville Road.
But for the purposes of the motion, it is Millville Street?
The Chapter 90 application.
Millville Street.
Excellent, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Right, but not everybody's caught up with it yet.
Give it some time.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, all right, thank you very much. And thank you, John, for joining us.
Thanks, John. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Well, no, John joined us from vacation, so thank you very much, John.
Thank you, especially then.
Have a good night.
You too. All right.
I think we're back to order.
Now, I think, all right. So backtracking to page one of the agenda. So I believe that we are looking to go back to item three, is that?
Yes.
So, which is approval of meeting minutes. So hopefully you've all had a chance to read the many minutes that we had for July 2nd, June 26th, April 10th, March 20th, March 13th, March 6th, February 28th, February 20th, and February 21st.
I, if I may, make a note. Our originally opposed agenda included executive session minutes, which have not been circulated to the board. We are still reviewing and editing those minutes for accuracy and length. So the executive session minutes, while part of the agenda, I would advise to not be part of the motion to approve tonight because the whole board has not received the final copy of them.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes for the week as read by the chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? No, did people, some people had some edits suggested.
Thank you. So yes, so I got a handful of comments that have been incorporated in the packet that was sent out and the minutes that are being voted on now incorporate those comments.
And I think as we get into the rhythm of having the minutes, we've started this rhythm a little bit also in that we will be seeing minutes with like a little bit of time to review them before we vote on them at a future meeting.
Yeah, my anticipation is that the cadence will not be that you vote on minutes at the following meeting, but you'll be distributed minutes at the following meeting and then you vote on them in the meeting after that. So if we can look ahead to point number four on the agenda, the July 17 minutes are not being voted on tonight. You'll have them until the August 21 meeting to review, provide feedback, and then vote on them at that point.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great, thank you. And all right, so that brings us right to item four, the circulation of the meeting minutes for review for approval at a future meeting. So this is for the July 17 open meeting and July 17 executive session. And we have, we have been sent these. And so can you just review for us the preferred process for getting feedback on these minutes?
Yeah, certainly. So provide both Katie Moxom, Executive Assistant, and myself any notes that you have on them. And then we will kind of review the footage, make sure that, you know, comports with what happened, and make the amendment and send it out to the group with a note and saying, we changed point, you know, X, Y, Z to let you know.
Thank you. Okay, so there is no vote on that one. So then we have item five, but so we covered 5A with Ellen Agro. But we also have item 5B, which is the Recognition of Senior Citizens Day on Sunday, September 8, 2024, which is sponsored by the Mendon Lions Club and the Council on Aging. This event will be held at the Unitarian Church 13 Maple Street, Mendon, Massachusetts. So Jeremy, were you, so did you have comments about this?
So circulated was a proclamation prepared by the Council on Aging Director. And so we have Senior Citizen Day. So the proclamation says, kind of recognizes the contributions to the community from the senior community and recognizing the commitment of the Commonwealth to safeguard the independence and dignity of the elders in our community. So this vote would be the select board designating this day as Senior Citizens Day in the town of Mendon.
And I know in past years, we have often read the full proclamation into the record. Let me see, which I believe we have in our packet. Thank you. Ah, scroll past it. Am I going to close this? Go up one. Oh, I thought it was. Oh, there we go. Okay. So would we want to read this? Would, I will.
I just like to make the motion to proclaim Sunday, September 8, 2024, Senior Citizen Day in the town of Mendon.
Uh, second. I thought you were going to do it in your proclaimer voice.
I thought that's what it was.
Okay. So I suppose for discussion, we could read this proclamation.
Yeah, there are four whereas.
Would you, would you like to? Proclamation, Brendan? Fantastic.
Okay, a proclamation for the senior, awarded to the senior citizens of Mendon. Whereas the town of Mendon is truly blessed with senior citizens who have given their time and talents to make the town of Mendon a better place to live. And whereas those elder citizens of Mendon represent a wealth of knowledge and understanding. And whereas those elder statesmen have offered themselves freely and without compensation in an attempt to improve their community. And whereas throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, citizens are gathering to express their thanks to the seniors of the Commonwealth and to reaffirm the commitment of the Commonwealth and to safeguard the independence and dignity of our elders.
All right, thank you. All right, would anyone like to add any further discussion?
I hope to see some of you guys there. I went last year. It was a great time.
Yes.
It's very worthwhile.
Yes, and yes, I also was able to go last year. I'm, you know, thrilled that Mendon has this recognition. I think it's, I appreciate that the Lions Club and the Council on Aging together put this on to honor our senior citizens because they really do so much for our community. And also at that event, there is a formal reading of this proclamation as well as there will be a certificate that we'll be signing. So, oh, we have it already, okay. So we can sign that, some of us can sign that tonight. All right, is there further discussion? All right, well then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, great, thank you. All right, so then we have more recognition, which is item C, Recognition of the Senior Citizen of the Year, Ann Mazur.
I move to proclaim Ann Mazur as the Senior Citizen of the Year in the town of Mendon.
Second.
All right, further discussion?
Sounds good. So whereas Ann is the Community Preservation Committee and Land Use Committee Chair and has worked collaboratively with the committee members for many years. Whereas Ann organized to have Mendon adopt the Community Preservation Act in 2004 and has since managed CPA, bringing millions of dollars into the town through state matching funds, private donations, and various grants. CPA projects have included preserving land, improving recreational facilities, restoring historical buildings, and working towards providing affordable homes in Mendon. Whereas Ann worked to designate Mendon as a green community in 2010, improving the energy efficiency in town buildings, saving over $500,000 through energy savings and grants. Whereas with Ann's direction, Mendon became an MVP community, renovating the town hall campus landscape and incorporating low-impact development practices into the town bylaws. Whereas Ann has served on Mendon's Economic Development Committee. Whereas Ann has lived in Mendon since 1987 with her husband Brian and their three children, Jake, Jesse, and Casey. She has two grandchildren with a third on the way.
Wonderful. All right, any, any further discussion? I would like to add that I think this is a wonderful choice. I know I've been privileged to work with Ann Mazur on a number of projects in recent years, and she is an inspiration to me and I know to many others in this town. So I am thrilled that she is being honored in this way.
Yeah, I see her as a pillar. She's very foundational to how this town is at the moment.
Yes.
Congratulate her.
Yes. Any, any further comments?
Just that it's well deserved. One for ours.
I think we could, we could.
All the points and all the things from green communities to Ann Bank.
Yes.
Community preservation, like you said. It was sorely needed and, you know, she is just the kind of person that sees that something needs to get done and she does it.
Right.
And she's very clever and persuasive in getting other people to go along.
Yes.
It's a real talent and she's a real gift.
Yes, she is an asset to our town.
Yeah, and you can look around town and see all the different projects that she's directly impacted through, you know, directly impacted or impacted through bylaw development. So it's well deserved.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you. All right. Next up, we have item six. So which is to discuss a new open meeting law complaint. So Jeremy, over to you.
If I may, thank you. So there's an obligation when a board receives an open meeting law complaint for the board to be apprised of it before the response. I discussed no vote in here. I talked with an attorney from Murphy Hesse on my way here, and she said we need a vote for them to respond in the affirmative. So at the end of this, I would be looking for a motion for approving town council to respond to the open meeting complaint question here. So on July 20th, the town received an open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins of Northport, Alabama, regarding a July 12 response from then interim town administrator in response to a July 5 open meeting law complaint. So we have to disseminate the complaint to the board, meet to review the complaint, respond to the complaint in writing, and send that response to the Attorney General's Office, which we will do. So the violation was that the town did not respond to a request for minutes within the 10 calendar days as required. The request from July 5 was then requested again later on July 18 in a more expansive sense. And the town, through our attorney, has responded in the way we best can at this moment, which does not include the entirety of the response, but included a plan for responding to the entirety of it. So the action here is that we will reiterate our response to the July 18 and reiterate our efforts to respond to the rest of the response and acknowledge that we did not respond within the 10 calendar days as required. Again, we are disseminating information on the open meeting law, both the guide and training to boards and chairs, to boards and commission chairs. And I am in the process of engaging town council to create a, provide a open meeting law training for boards and commissions chairs. So I'd be looking for a motion to designate town council. The chair would be looking for a motion to designate town council as the respondent to this open meeting law request.
I would be looking for that motion, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. And thank you, town council, for responding for us. All right, next up, oh, we can skip. Okay, we did seven, we did eight, we did nine, we did 10. Okay, 11, is that? Were you agreed?
Yeah, that's what I have, yeah.
All right, so we have some appointments to, appointments and reappointments to consider. These are all contingent on completing ethics training if applicable. So we have.
If you want to just read this motion?
Sure, I think, I think so. They're in, it's all in the agenda. So go ahead and read the motion.
Dev planning into the Historic District Commission, term to expire 6/30/27. Colonel Ryan was constable, term to expire 6/30/27. Pete Powers is a constable, term to expire 6/30/27. Carolyn Barthol is a land use committee alternate, term to expire 6/30/27. And additionally, to appoint Karen. And additionally, to appoint Karen Slattery-Mead to the Historic District Commission, term to expire 6/30/26, all subject to the completion of ethics training as required.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We have some new appointments and reappointments. Yes, thank you. We always appreciate volunteers giving up their time for these meetings. It is so crucial to the work that we do in town. So thank you all for stepping up and stepping up again. All right. So we did item 12. We did item 13. All right, so 14, is that all right? So item 14 is to review and vote to approve a one-day liquor license for Mendon Twin Drive-In. And I don't know if we have, I believe we don't have anyone here for that. So Jeremy, do you have a few words?
Yeah, I'll just go to it. So we had a little back and forth with this, with the ABCC, to ensure our compliance with both the letter and the spirit of the law, honestly. So the Mendon Twin Drive-In, I'm just getting to the point here to be able to read there. They are hosting a Jimmy Buffett night at the Mendon Twin Drive-In, so they'll be having a Jimmy Buffett cover band and then playing Jimmy Buffett concert on both of their screens. They are currently the holder of a malt beverage and wine license, and they are looking for a liquor license, a all beverages license, to be able to serve margaritas during their Jimmy Buffett night.
I can't understand why.
And entities are not allowed to hold both a wine and beer license only and an all beverage license only in the same specific licensed square footage. So they will be served separately and distinctly, and this is confirmed by the ABCC and has been confirmed by the applicant itself. And we have a routing slip that goes through of their, all of the permit applications. We are waiting for the building commission to sign off specifically on the language. They signed off generically on the language, but the fire department needs them to sign off specifically on the MGL, which they are willing to do, have yet to actually sign. So the motion as presented would be pending that routing slip.
I move to approve one-day all alcoholic beverages special license to Mendon Twin Drive-In, 35 Milford Street, August 17, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight, subject to successful completion of the power.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'd like paradise.
Yeah, I'm like, anybody, yeah. I think we all have the same song going through our head now. Anyone want to comment on the lost shake or salt? All right. Any questions, discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. It passes. So they will be having some.
Oh, I should add, I should add, the motion already passed, but the Mendon Twin Drive-In will be making a donation to the Dana Farber Cancer Institute at the conclusion of this event, from some of the proceeds from the event. And they didn't say in honor of Jimmy Buffett, but I imagine it's much well-connected.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. So on to item 15, review and vote to approve the one-day liquor license for the Brothers of the Brush.
I move to approve one-day wines and malt beverages special license to Brothers of the Brush, 75 Park Road Ave., August 25, 2024, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Mendon Town Beach, subject to successful completion of the power.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
My one hang-up here was that it was a town resource being used for a private entity. This is after the town beach closes for the season, after the lifeguards, you know, typically go back to school. So the beach would be closed to the general public generally. I've confirmed this with the Parks Department, and this is a program that has happened in the last number of years as an appreciation for this community service-oriented group. I'm glad to support it from an administrative point of view.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. All right. So we did 16. All right. So we're up 217. To review and approve the MOA, MA Laborers District Council of the Laborers International Union of North America, Mendon Town Hall Employees Local 272. All right. Jeremy, do you have?
Yeah, so this was, we just missed this for our last meeting. We got it in a day or two after. So this is Town Hall Employees, the six or seven employees, give or take, sorry if I'm missing somebody, who's, who are covered by this. This would be retroactive July 1st. It comports with the economic parameters consistent with the other agreed-upon MOAs for town unions. And so this would, to vote this would take effect for the next applicable pay period, and then everyone would get retro back to July 1st.
All right. Any questions or?
I would move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Mendon and Mendon Town Hall Employees Local 272 for fiscal years 2025 and 2026.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Great. Passes. Glad that will be retroactive. All right. So next up, 18, review and sign the election warrant. So this is for the September primary, and is that?
I move to approve the election warrant for the September 2024 state primary.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
This will be the third day of September, and at the Misco Hill School, and this warrant will be posted at Town Hall, Post Office, Taft Public Library, and the Town of Mendon website.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. And so we will, we will sign this before we leave.
Yes, I, there's a couple of documents you all need to sign before you leave.
So, yes. Nobody's allowed to leave until we get your signature. All right. So then on to 19, old business. So we want to get back to our discussion of the Select Board Policy and Procedure document. I think it's been, it's been a few meetings since we really dug into it. So Brendan, could you say a little bit about where we are?
Sure, sure. So this was a, one of the reasons we went to find our report was to allow the formation of working groups. So this is a kind of a spin-off group where we're taking a look at historical Select Board policies and trying to make an all-encompassing document that is a best set of policies and procedures moving forward that will basically supersede all these disparate policies that exist. Where we are, we've gotten a draft that is pretty much in final form from the working group, and it's been distributed to the wider board, and at that point, it becomes, you know, subject to open meeting laws, so the edits have to take place here. Or someone else could be a designated, you know, like a, yeah, exactly, like the town administrator could collect our feedback and make the edits. So, yeah, it's, it's going to be our choice of how to proceed. I know that in the previous open meetings, I had gotten some good feedback. Most of it has been incorporated so far, and welcome to go either way.
And so I don't recall which draft we've seen. So you said that you've incorporated some feedback into a new draft, and have we seen that one yet?
I did, yeah, I did recirculate it. I can double-check that that was the most recent.
Okay.
So I think how I can help facilitate this would be Brendan and I talk after this, make sure I have the most recent one. I'll circulate it to the group in advance of the next meeting. It will be an agenda item on our next meeting. And any feedback that individuals have on particular points, submit to both Katie and I, and then where I see points that warrant open meeting discussion on it, we can put those as specific agenda items. But it sounds like a lot of work has already been done, and I think it's in a great spot.
Hopefully, hopefully we'll get through it and get it formalized.
Brendan, are we suggesting that what we need to do now is now the thing is in place to go through sections at a time, and just approve each section? You want to do some of that at each meeting, like designate 15 minutes per meeting to go through another section to.
I guess I'm open to doing that.
The only reason I say this, I had spoken to Jim Prusak, and he had, he told me that he facilitated that in a couple of different communities. The way that they did it was they had put the document together, and then section by section. Not that you need another thing to do, Jeremy.
Yeah, that's fine.
But the suggestion was to break it down into sections, and he is the town administrator had reviewed it and then put it on each agenda. They did it within a matter of weeks, but they had a section and put that next section, you know, in the agenda. Let us all look at it, kind of like we do notes, and then bring it up and facilitate a discussion, you know, 10 to 15 minutes, and then we approve that section, it's done. And I think Mike Goddard actually had suggested the same thing a few months ago.
Yes.
But I think that's really the best way to do it.
Right. And we did, we did start.
We did one section.
We did start, and then a lot of other things happened.
But it gets overwhelming, and I think that if it were pre-scheduled on to things, then you wouldn't feel like you might miss something by approving large sections.
I can keep you on a cadence, and I like the section-by-section piece in that if a future board wants to come back and revise a piece of the policy, it doesn't open up the whole policy, it opens up section 2.2.
And then what it also does.
That makes sense, yeah.
Forces you to become familiar with it and actually put your stamp on it.
Right. And make additional suggestions. I believe you said you already had some suggestions.
Exactly. And I, and a few other projects, the kind of methodical and slow way of going through something, exactly what you said, it makes you more familiar with the individual pieces. So I can commit to, you know, the next six or eight, 10, whatever it is, select board meetings, having one or two sections on here that the board can then vote on, will have motions on. So I'll circulate the broader policy and communication that is my anticipation that on, you know, August 21st, we will review and then vote on sections one and two, or, you know, whatever it is.
And if we have feedback about sections that are not sort of next up, can we still send them to you?
Certainly.
Would it be helpful to have like a, like, subject line, like, subject line about the, you know?
Policy feedback dash, whatever.
Okay.
I'm going to use a unique identifier.
Okay.
Because we're all software engineers and architects.
Sounds good. All right. Because I know, I know a few things have come up where I found myself referring back to that, like, about the, referring to the appointment policies, and I have some thoughts about how to, like, update that. Because it came up with, you know, some of the recent appointments, and we still have some appointments to make. So I think it will be useful to talk about that.
I like the idea of seeing a vote in the minutes per section as well.
Yeah, yeah. In the record, that's, that's good.
The unique way of referring back to the work.
Yeah, I like that. So I'll take the action to make sure all the previous revisions are incorporated, and I'll get them to you, to the town administrator for those online, and we could start this process.
Great. And then I guess the two of you will perhaps decide how to break it up, or will that be you, Jeremy, deciding how to chop it up?
I mean, it's, so we can talk, we can all talk agenda setting, that's not like an open meeting subject conversation, but I think it, for efficiency's sake, Brendan and I can.
Yes, yeah. That sounds great. All right. Fantastic. Looking forward to getting back to that. I think, you know, it is useful to have that document. Okay. All right. So next up, we have, so old business, item B is to review the current list of Select Board Liaison, the Select Board Liaisons to Boards and Commissions. And I know, so there is something in the packet. Must be towards the end.
Yeah.
Page 134.
Yeah. Exactly.
She said page 134?
Yes.
Oh, I see. It's printed page 13, it's, sorry, the PDF or the reader doesn't match up with it. That's why I'm struggling with it. So it says 13.
That should, I'm sorry.
It's okay. But that explains why I was not jumping to the right place. So.
Fix that next week. Sorry about that.
So, right. So I think I did see, so this lists are like the boards and committees, so please each check your name. I know, actually, one thing I noticed is for the Mendon Upden Regional School Committee, it just lists me, but it's also been Mike Goddard. Like, it hasn't, it wasn't so much like primary and secondary, it's just that is, they have so many meetings with their main meetings and their subcommittee meetings that it, to people was useful. But I guess I would ask that people, that each of you and me, that we look and see if we are comfortable continuing in the same roles. I know, I guess I'll put it out there that if there's somebody else who is willing to take on the Mendon Upden Regional School Committee, I would, I would welcome that. I mean, I do enjoy going to the meetings, but I have not been able to go to as many meetings lately. So if, so those meetings are Monday nights. I know Planning Board is also Monday nights. Usually they're the same Monday nights, I believe. But if others want to consider, let me know. I think, Jeremy, you had suggested that we vote on this at our next meeting?
Yeah, because we brought this up at the last meeting, and two members weren't here, and they graciously didn't put you on the committee, so you didn't want to be on. So we thought we would extend the same courtesy. So we could have a non-votable or non-binding discussion here, and folks saying, you know, I'd like to switch X for Y or A for B. And then what I would do is present the fiscal 2025 list, those two right-hand columns, as a list for the next meeting, which you can vote on the list as presented rather than voting on each individual liaison.
This was the, in the packet that was attached, right?
Yeah, it's like the fourth to last page.
For some reason, it keeps telling me it can't open.
I have the packet. Oh, yeah, I went to the packet that's on.
There's also a packet on the website, yeah. In which case we.
Packet on the website, that's going to solve my problem right now.
We deleted two pages, so that's why.
Okay, that's why, okay.
So, yeah, yours probably says 132.
It says 134, but 132.
It says 123.
Okay. I take that back. Oh, we deleted the whole section then, the two pages.
I mean, yes, I know there are many multi-page documents in this.
Speaking for myself, I'm pretty happy with how things have been going. I could probably add myself to, I'll have to look at meeting times and frequency, but maybe I can add my name to it. Or to other boards.
One that wasn't on here was BVT, that didn't have a liaison assigned to it. So the board should discuss who they would like to be the liaison to that as well, or if they want a liaison to them.
It would be probably useful to know when they meet, because I know that's.
It's crazy. For kids, that's a challenge.
I see a lot of cooter on here. I haven't been able to really dedicate time to all of these guys. I have been pretty active with CONCOM. Board of Health, I was more active at the beginning, but their meetings tend to overlap with a lot of my other ones.
Right. And that's, I mean, I think they tend to overlap with the Select Board meetings.
Yes.
Often. Because they run a different schedule. They're every other week regardless.
Right.
And we aren't.
Okay, right.
Right, because we're two weeks.
We're first and third.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So, but the Board of Health hasn't really, this year has seemed, I mean, I've only been here this year, but has seemed very well-organized and very communicative to us, so.
Yeah, I would agree. One thing that I would add is when we re-upped kind of this liaison thing, I think that the individual chairs, maybe we should write some sort of form letter saying, hey, you know, your Select Board Liaison is this person. If you would like to come before the board, or you have issues, and you want to talk to them, or we can.
It feels like we need to address that in our policy.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Send a note to yourself.
Well, if liaison was a role in our policy and it meant a very specific thing, then we could distribute.
And I think. And I think, because I, I think we did agree, it doesn't mean we need to attend all of the meetings, like, it's.
It would mean somebody should contact.
We try to attend the meetings and we try to provide a clear point of contact for those boards and committees.
I can't, for some reason, I can't look back, the sharepoint back until May, so I'm sure there's some kind of a technical thing, I have to get it logged back in. I'll tell you that my, my memory is that it was the, uh, the Vincon.
Yep.
Yep, that's.
It's tied to, certainly, I served on that Valley Tech School Committee a long time ago, and, you know, Dr. Fitz, but certainly if that's open, I'll certainly, they, they used to be one thing.
I, I believe it's the third Thursday.
Yeah, so that's fine.
Okay.
If you want to add me onto that one, is there any other?
I just see you for, for Finance Committee.
When I was the chair, that's all I had time to do.
I will note for, for member Brendan that the stor-, you're the liaison to the Historical Commission, um, and the Historical Commission, the Historical District Commission are attempting to align their membership to be able to host joint meetings.
Okay, so it makes sense, I was like, that was what I was gonna volunteer for anyway.
Okay, yeah, that would make the most sense.
Yeah.
Two for one.
Yeah, that would be great, to go over the, trust my house is like almost three hundred years old, so it makes sense.
Oh, nice.
So, I'm sorry, Jason, did you say you were Conservation Commission liaison? I didn't have that noted.
That, that's where I've been spending the majority of my time.
Ah, so, yeah, definitely.
Power hire buddies now. That, that's actually been really beneficial, the knowledge, like, gaining the knowledge there, especially when we were hiring the new person, uh, the new agent, like, yeah, that's, that board's been eye-opening.
Now, this is a separate thing, but the Bylaw Committee.
Yeah, I have to get that on the next agenda. So I have a draft sitting in my email, and I'll send that off to you.
Okay, well, that actually is, uh, right, we can bring that, come back to that in item twenty-one. But I think, so I, I feel like we've, we've discussed the liaison, so I think, um, if people do have changes that they want to make, communicate them to Jeremy. And, yeah, I would say, like, if, like, I'm happy being liaison of the, you know, the committees that I've worked with, but if somebody else wants to, to, you know, has, you know, also has a relationship with that committee and wants to do that, I'm also happy to, you know, pass the torch. So, all right, thank you. So we'll come back to this next time, and so then, now we have our town administrator report.
All right, thank you. To close the matter, we had a, um, a bond payment relative to an employee's mishandling of, um, a small amount of cash a number of months ago, and that matter's been closed, we've been paid out, and that is, that is no longer a liability for the town. Relative to the Senior Center, um, we submitted a request to Congressman Ockham Class's office through community project funding for the full thirteen million dollars for the, um, Senior Center, which, you know, they can only tell you no. Uh, so, uh, the House has marked up the, um, the appropriation bill and included eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Mendon Senior and Community Center. So it has not yet been voted on by the full House, and it has not yet made its way to the Senate, and it's not yet been signed by the President, uh, but that is our first step in a long, um, you know, if you remember your, um, your, I'm just a bill speech, your Schoolhouse Rock speech, but it's the first necessary step. So the fiscal twenty-four requests were enacted in March of twenty-four, so we, in a best-case scenario, can expect to hear good news in March of twenty-five for our fiscal twenty-five request. But it's great news, in, in any event. We recently hosted, um, through the Town Clerk's Office, a Department of Homeland Security security assessment of both Town Hall and the Misko School for physical security in advance of September and November elections. There's some information in your packet here as to what the reviews entailed. Will be a, will be provided with the report at a later date, but this was conducted by the Town Clerk's Office and the Superintendent of Schools since, since precincts one and two both voted at the Misko Hill, Misko Hill School. Um, I've circulated open meeting law educational materials and reminders to boards and commissions and department heads as well, since many department heads here support boards and commissions in their public work, and will continue to educate chairs, vice-chairs, and members, and plan to have a formal session conducted by Town Council shortly. Uh, we have a capital project kickoff meeting tomorrow morning, which, uh, we have a capital improvements working group that's been working to inventory town assets, to kind of schedule a five-year rolling plan of what capital improvements in town look like. So we're refining this year after year, and it's our, it's our kickoff tomorrow. Stuff kind of gets filtered through my office for a, you know, smell test before it gets, gets to the full committee. I take an expansive view of what make, what makes a good request or not, to give the committee, um, a, a great chance to talk about stuff, but to not kind of waste their time with, you know, I want to buy a water heater or something, right? That's not a capital request.
I just asked while we're talking about, about assets, that, that ambulance that we had received a letter from Congressman's office, and we were gonna get it, get it titled, where are we with that, was that successful or was it a kickback?
I don't know at the time, at right now, but I will, I will find out when you're.
But it's been over a year, finally wrote us a letter, lack of anything else, and said, this is Mendon's, do what you want. And I had suggested that John Dudley take that to the, either our insurance agent or just to the registry, and then just get it titled, and then we could go ahead and just launch the process. And I'm just wondering, I anticipated that it wouldn't go smoothly. If anybody could do it, it would be John Dudley, so hopefully, uh, he was successful, but I'm just wondering.
All right, we will follow up on that for sure. We, uh, at our last, um, select board meeting, we voted to, two select board meetings ago, maybe, we voted to approve, um, the Phase Three Water Study through Wood and Current. So, um, there's a draft that was submitted to, um, for the plan to Mast D E P at the end of June. They're hopeful to finish their permitting through the end of August. September, we're doing some moderate site improvements, um, to the town-owned land, um, and then the plant, this kind of building up to, uh, late September into October, there's a prolonged pumping test, um, at the town-owned wells. So between five and sixteen days, um, uh, depending on the rain schedule or the rain forecast, and, and you need to do it when it's dry. If you, if it rains, you know, you're gonna get a false result. So, uh, we'll keep the board updated. I had a call just as I was leaving today, um, from Wood and Current, so I owe them a call back. Phase Four, um, which is, um, kind of next, and we don't yet have, um, have an executed agreement for, but we've applied for a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, one-stop grant to pay for, um, a majority or all of it, depending on how we scope it. So that's developing a more serious plan of what a municipal water entity would look like. And we're not there yet, depends on, depends on what the, um, prolonged pumping tests come back for, if we need to kind of take a step back and reevaluate, um, the, the place for something like this. But we're, we're continuing forward, and I'll keep the, um, board updated. Uh, Community Choice Energy, we had a successful first information session with the Land Use Committee. So the recorded posting is online, I've gotten a handful of questions from residents directed to me, which I've been able to, uh, direct them to the recording and say, actually, ask that question of our consultant, here you go. So that's posted online, um, and it's linked, um, on, on the town administrator page. This, uh, this board has talked about a compensation and classification study for town positions and employees, um, and has promised that to bargaining units prior to our next bargaining session, um, in advance of fiscal twenty twenty-seven. So I've been doing a little research on this. I've found that the Town of Concord has performed a very similar study and posted a lot of their information online in a very helpful manner. So I link that in my town administrator report here. You can click on the Town of Concord link and get to, or you can Google Town of Concord Compensation Classification Study, um, and I'm speaking with their team, um, in the next coming weeks. I have a copy of the R F P, um, which I joke about, but not really joke about. My favorite thing is R and D to, you know, rip off and duplicate that, um, you know, some other municipal entity did something really well, and we don't have to spend time carving it from whole cloth. So I thank the, the kind folks of the Town of Concord for doing a good job, and we can, we can build off of that. Uh, but it's, um, between starting your procurement and ending up with a final report, it's about a year, um, you know, give or take the specifics. So, um, we have, we have time, we're on a good timeline now, but it's important to keep this ball moving forward. So I'll keep the commission updated as we refine, um, this, um, this draft R F P that we have, and, um, as we can go forward and present this, um, for. The funding will be, you know, depending on the, the level of engagement from a consultant, we'll have to perhaps get a town meeting warrant article to be able to, to fund this sort of thing. Perhaps we can fund from existing resources, it depends on the scope. So we'll see what, what comes of that. My last bit that isn't in my published report is that, um, the, I've reached out to the board about your availability, uh, but the Planning Board will be scheduling a joint meeting for the Select Board and the Planning Board on, uh, note, or September sixteenth, sorry, September sixteenth, um, for approval of the Housing Production Plan, which, um, I imagine a number of you are familiar with already. So it will be a Monday night meeting, November sixteenth. I'll get you more specifics on the location, remote availability and whatnot, but I wanted to put that on your calendar.
And that is, uh, for the Housing Production Plan, uh, it needs both a vote from the Planning Board and from the Select Board, so rather than having two separate presentations and separate votes, this gives the opportunity for, um, discussion across the boards and voting, voting the same night, rather than.
Can you repeat the night again?
September sixteenth, Monday, September sixteenth. I think I said November at least once in there, but September sixteenth.
Also, another thing, piggy, piggyback, piggybacking off of what you said for, about the Community Choice Energy, just a reminder that there is, uh, an in-person information session on Tuesday, August thirteenth, at the Senior Center, it was at one thirty? Um, and that one is in-person only, as opposed to, uh, hybrid. And, uh, so we had a lot of people online who came for the information session, did the Land Use Committee, uh, put on the hybrid meeting. But this second one at the Senior Center will just be in-person. And for anybody watching this, uh, people are welcome to bring their, um, electric bills if they want to, if they have questions about how this will affect them and maybe get guidance about anything that they need to do. So, but there's, yeah, there will be that information session.
And, um, there will also be an information session as part of the Select Board meeting on August twenty-first.
Yes, yes, so that will come up.
Oh, yes, sorry.
No, that's okay, but it's, it's relevant to mention it now, we can mention it early and often. All right, uh, anything else, Jeremy?
That's, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so then, um, future agenda topics, um, so, uh, and I will say, so I'm just gonna put it out there at the beginning, it's not on this list, but we are going to, uh, vote next time about opening the special town meeting, setting a date for the special town meeting and, uh, opening that warrant, so that'll be at our next meeting as well. It's time, um, so that is on there. And then, uh, Jeremy, could you say something about the, uh, the goal-setting and retreat?
Right, um, so I should, I should have flipped these two. So the Callan Center Retreat, um, the deliverable through the Callan Center engagement on organizational structure was facilitating a Select Board Retreat. So the, I, I talked about this a little bit last time, but, um, we're looking after Labor Day, kind of an off-cycle, um, I'll poll the board in terms of whether, um, a, um, evening weekday or a morning of a Saturday works. It's, um, important to have all, uh, members of the board in person and available, so we'll be, um, kind of expansive with our, you know, what works for folks. It will be facilitated by the Callan Center and will be specific to, um, their mandate. It will be separate and distinct from the Select Board goal-setting, which, um, I am going to advocate to also have a third-party facilitator, um, be part of, not necessarily through the Callan Center, they have, um, folks available to do that sort of thing, but we can procure that in any number of ways. But to set, um, a series of, of goals for the Select Board, either in the next fiscal year, the next two fiscal years, some rolling, um, combination of both, and then from which my goals as town administrator will be derived from there. So I will have my own professional goals, which I will, um, communicate to the board and ask for, um, an endorsement of, uh, but my goals for the town will be derived from what the Select Board goals for the town are. So I think it's important, um, in defining, um, our direction for you to define our direction for us. Um, so those will be two separate and distinct meetings. I think it's important to do the, uh, Callan Center Retreat first in that we have a consultant on board, we have a report, we have kind of timed, they're both time-sensitive, um, but we're already in the middle of August, so the beginning of, um, September doesn't seem that far away, um, anyway. So I will be pulling the board for availability there.
Thank you. And then the next item is, uh, for future agenda topics, is this Town Fields Discussion. This is a, um, in response in large part to feedback that we got from many community members. Sometimes it was in response to, uh, the proposal for the Senior and Community Center, is that some community member said, well, that's not what we want, we want, uh, practice fields. And, uh, you know, I think these are not mutually exclusive, and so we, we, the town does work on multiple projects at the same time. So this is to bring forward that discussion about how we can, um, work towards goals, maybe establish what our goals are in terms of fields, but of course, this is not just about the Select Board, so we, uh, many of us heard feedback from the public, but, um, this, uh, potentially, uh, affects, you know, multiple boards and commissions. And so this is, um, now I'm hoping that we can, uh, now and as we lead up to the twenty-first, sort of, I make sure that we identify and invite stakeholders. So I, I guess, ones that I am aware of, so there's, uh, Parks Commission, there is, um, Community Preservation Committee, Land Use Committee, potentially, um, Planning Board, because this will, or, um, this touches on potentially a lot of master plan content. So, um, there's some question about, you know, when to bring in schools, and there are some, there is a community group who's working directly with the school district about, uh, plans related to fields. So this is our opportunity to decide who we want to invite to that discussion, so tonight we're not making any decisions about how we'll proceed, uh, because we want that to be a discussion with all of these stakeholders. So are there additional stakeholder, stakeholders?
I believe the community organization represents youth sports, but you might just want to check with their director to see if that's true. I mean, I was a director of youth sports here for a while, like, it's, you know, those people rotate. You're gonna want to hear from, like, the club owners, the people who do the.
Right.
Field arrangements, they can probably represent their teams.
Right, and I think this, the meeting in a couple of weeks will be more of the start of the discussion, and the way that we can figure out what the framework will be for the discussion. Oh, wait, I see, Dan is here. Dan, did you have comments?
Hi, hopefully I put this unmuted correctly. Um, I think, I can send you contact info for the various nonprofit youth sports leagues. I believe they are separate from that group that's working with the school project. Some of them are involved, some of them aren't, but it might be worth reaching out to all of those groups separately.
Great, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't know yet how much time we will be devoting to this. It potential, this is going to be a, I think, it, it will be a topic that will need a lot of discussion. This is going to be a, I think, it will be a topic that will need a lot of discussion, and not all of it will be at our next select board meeting. But this will hopefully open up the way for that discussion to continue. So yeah, any other input on that? So yes, and if, right, if any of you think of other, like, boards or commissions or other groups that we should invite, please let me know or let Jeremy know, and we'll make sure to invite them. Yeah, all right, so then, right, Jeremy, you already mentioned, right, we're also going to be having our follow-up community choice energy information session. So again, with Colonial Power Group. This is after the initial deadline, so there are people who got this mailer, there's a deadline to opt out, August 20th, but people can opt out or opt in at any time. So this is an ongoing program, and people do not have to make a decision now. If they want to opt out before they ever see anything on their bill, the deadline is 8:20, I believe.
Yeah, it's 8:20 for the September meeting.
For the September meeting.
Which will be the first meeting.
But they're still, you know, there, people may still have questions about that, especially, yeah, as they think about it more. And then, any other, did I miss anything in those previous topics?
I got one suggestion.
Yes, okay.
It's a request, and I will send the charter to Jeremy after this, but I'd like to create a new committee, and I'd like to have that discussion at the next meeting if we have some time. This would be for a bylaw review committee.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think it's, right, it relates to some of our goals that we set previously, so, great, okay, so.
People and got some things together, and I think we're ready to talk about it.
I actually have a topic that dovetails with that a little bit, so I'm the liaison for the planning board. So they have a grant order of a CMR PC to revise zoning bylaws specifically. And the planning board is also looking for the select board to appoint a zoning bylaw review committee. Those are pretty separate, they're separate but related things, because they'll have to talk to each other. I'm still waiting on a proposed list of people or whatever from.
Well, Dylan is one of my proposed members, and so that would be a great liaison to the planning board, so.
Yeah, so that may come up soon. I just wanted you guys to know about that.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people in the town who are very interested in doing this type of work.
Then Mike M., I know you, thank you for alerting us about the opening, reminding us about opening the special town meeting warrant. So I know you've already added one in a previous conversation. So, but did you have any additional topics? I mean, you could always send them to Jeremy at any time, but this is just our opportunity to talk through this and let people in the audience know what we have ahead.
Right, to kind of telegraph two weeks ahead of time rather than two days ahead of time with the.
I'd like any time.
All right, so, so I'll just, yeah, read that our, yeah, next meeting is August 21st, 2024. And so, yeah, feels useful to say that before. So then, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you all. So, meeting is adjourned. Oh, what time is that to my glasses?
8:25.
At 8:25. Use that gavel again.
Yeah, just to make a decision.